Good evening. Welcome to the Arcadia Unified School District Board of Education meeting on August 27, 2024. It is 7:06 PM. I am calling this meeting to order, which is being recorded and livestreamed on YouTube and can be accessed at boardmeeting.ausd.net. All right, roll call. All board members and executive staff are present, and I have a pledge of allegiance. So would everyone please stand? All right, thank you, everyone. I have inspiration this evening as well, and Dr. Bernostal has mentioned that our theme of the year is celebrating healthy partnerships. So I just wanted to touch on that a little bit. You know, we are in the business of education, but you know, we don't have widgets, you know, that go through a factory. It's people, students, right? And we develop partnerships, we develop generally relationships. So I have a few quotes about relationships, okay? So first is from Brene Brown. Connection is why we're here. It is what gives purpose and meaning to our lives. Got another one from Stephen Covey. Trust is the glue of life. It is the most essential ingredient in effective communication. It's a foundational principle that holds all relationships. And third and last, from Margaret Wheatley. Relationships are all there is. Everything in the universe only exists because it is in relationship to everything else. Nothing exists in isolation. So relationships are very important. It's, you know, studies have shown it is one of the most important things in life. It gives life satisfaction and it makes life worth living, you know? All scientific studies show that. So really happy to have this as our theme this year, and hopefully we'll see some of those relationships, those partnerships as we continue our meeting and the rest of the year. So thank you. Okay, I need a, need to approve the agenda. I need a motion, please.
I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ng, and all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And this passes 5-0. There were reports of action taken in closed session, there was no action taken in closed session. And now we are to recognition. Masters in Governance Program Certificate of Completion.
I've got them. Mr. President, thank you. So a little bit about this, Masters in Governance. CSBA's Masters in Governance Program equips local education agencies with the knowledge and skills to build and support an effective governance structure. Up here at the dais, we have our five elected board members, officials, and to be a board member, you have to be a citizen of the city, but you don't have to have an education background. You could have an education background, but you come from, you know, whoever decides that they want to give back, they want to serve the community and serve as, in the capacity of a school board member, they can run and be elected. So where does that knowledge come from then, when you imagine that a typical school district is like a city, right? You know, you have a lot of property, you have facilities, you have maintenance, you have the education, obviously, safety, all of those things, the fiscal responsibility. So the CSBA, the California School Board Association, provides trainings, these modules, for elected school board members. Now, it's not required, it's obviously highly suggested and recommended because there's just so much knowledge for school board members before they take on this position to understand how it works. Not just all the local information, but just how the governance works, very much like ASB. So there's, there's several courses, actually five modules. There is Foundations of Effective Governance, Setting Direction. There's Policy and Judicial Review, Student Learning and Achievement. There's School Finance, Human Resources, Collective Bargaining, and then Community Relations and Advocacy, Governance Integration. So I'm really pleased to share with the community that our school board members have committed to, that as they come onto the board, a new board member is elected, that they will complete all of these modules, all of these lessons. Sometimes they're virtual, sometimes they're in person, before the first, the end of their first year. Our new board member, Board Member Vargo, has just upped the ante on this because she has completed all of them before even taking her seat. Now, it's a little different because she ran unopposed, so we had no election, so that allowed her to know she was going to be the board member prior to the election and be able to sign up. But equally, we appreciate that commitment and, you know, just taking it. It's a lot of time, it's an investment of a lot of time and a lot of reading material. The other thing, so just thank you to the board, thank you Jennifer for doing that, and your commitment as a board to that ongoing, you know, governance class for all our new members. Also, I'm proud that we send a member of our executive team each year with the new board members, or each time we have a new board member. And part of that is for two reasons. First of all, it's, it's a, it's a great knowledge base for us, even though we work in this field, our education is in education, there's a lot of changing, things that are changing all the time in the world of finance and transportation and you name it. So it's, it's a good background. But then the conversations that we can have makes it very meaningful because not only are you hearing about what is good fiscal, you know, governance, but what does that look like in Arcadia? So we have a member of our executive team go with them. So, so I'm just really excited to acknowledge that we had Greg Zanian, our Chief Strategy and Innovation Officer, along with the board member Vargo graduate. And so if you could just join me in a round of applause for that achievement. And I, you know, we were going to have them put the gowns on and play pomp and circumstance, but we know everyone's really busy. But I do want to take the time to present them with their completion certificates, and if we could take an opportunity to take pictures with the board, I would appreciate that. So if I can just go out front real quick.
All right, thank you, congratulations. It was a very long meeting, so it's a, it's a great achievement. Next on agenda is our student representative report, Ms. Fan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Fan, and I am the student representative to the Board of Education. And as you can see, I brought friends, so ASB Executive Council will be introducing themselves, and then we'll move on to the board report.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amber Chung, and I'm the ASB president.
Hello, my name is Keely Sun, and I'm the ASB vice president.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nicole Sun, I am the ASB treasurer.
Hello, my name is Yuni Ng, and I'm the ASB secretary.
Hello, my name is Christian Cassis, and I'm the ASB historian.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Ng, and I'm the Clubs Commissioner.
Hello, everyone. My name is Megan Cow, and I'm the Activities Commissioner.
Hello, my name is Megan Wong, and I'm the Publicity Commissioner.
Good evening. My name is Isabel Zhao, and I'm the EDI Commissioner.
Hi, everyone. My name is Avine, and I'm the Link Crew Commissioner.
Good evening. My name is Emily, and I'm the Academics Commissioner.
Hello, my name is Leslie Towne, I'm the Performing Arts Commissioner.
Hello, my name is Rena Shay, and I'm this year's Athletics Commissioner.
Hi, my name is Kelly Fong, and I'm the Spirit Commissioner.
Good evening. I'm Jolie Quo, and I'm the Senior Class President.
Hello, my name is Samantha Tong, and I'm the Senior Class Vice President.
Hi, I'm Elena Lee, and I'm the Senior Class Historian.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Lynn, and I'm the Senior Public Relations.
Hi, everyone. I'm Angelique Dizon, and I'm the Junior Class President.
Good evening. I'm Serena Guo, and I'm the Junior Vice President.
Hello, everyone. I'm Iris Lu, and I'm the Sophomore Class President.
Hello, my name is Brianna Chu, and I'm the Sophomore Vice President.
All right, before we begin, I just wanted to say that I'm really excited that school's back in session and also to be with everyone for a second year. And with that being said, here is the Board of Education report for August 27, 2024. The first all-school bonding event, Meet Before Melt, took place on Friday, August 16th. Students enjoyed free ice cream and toppings alongside writing their resolutions on an ice cream sundae wall. ASB Fall Elections have begun, and freshman candidates are in the midst of preparing for their campaigns. The official council will be announced on October 2nd, along with the homecoming royalty reveal. Students enjoyed ice cream in the heat while bonding over the first week of high school. The first ICC meeting will be held on September 3rd, and Clubs Day will be held on September 19th. The club chartering process was held on August 19th for prospective clubs. Advertising has begun for the 2024 homecoming season. Link Crew held their annual freshman orientation on Tuesday, August 13th. Freshmen were greeted in the Performing Arts Center for the first half of the day and joined their Link Crew leaders' groups for the second half of the day. Freshmen were able to familiarize themselves with the high school atmosphere before their first day of school. With the conclusion of all summer sports camps, the the 2024 Fall Sports Season is now underway. On Tuesday, August 20th, the Girls Tennis Team, Girls Volleyball Team, and Boys Water Polo Team competed in their first games of the season, with the Boys Water Polo Team winning with a final score of 13 to 9. The Homecoming Assembly will be held on October 13th at Salter Stadium. Senior Council hosted its first bonding event of the year, Senior Sunrise, on Friday, August 23rd. Seniors enjoyed Build Your Own Bagels with a sorted spread, fresh fruits, chocolate and blueberry muffins, and apple juice and orange juice. They also participated in making beaded bracelets, writing senior letters, and doing a yoga morning routine, all the while watching the sunrise on their last year of high school. And that concludes the board report.
Thank you, Ms. Fan, and thank you, students. All right. Thank you, ASB. Have a great night. So we have audience comments. We have no audience comments. And we have two action items. A, Appointment of Citizens Measure A Oversight Committee Members. Ms. Restlin.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. And it's that time of year where the wonderful board gets to approve and acknowledge our citizens oversight committee members. I believe the first one is Measure A, which is our parcel tax. Yes. Parcel tax was approved in 2017. It's $288 per parcel. It brings in about $4.3 million a year. It was approved for 18 years. And we are, sorry, I'm not going to do the math. We're, I think, eight years into it. But, and we have a great group. Couple of years ago, the state changed the law. We are allowed to retain committee members for a total of six years. So it's now three two-year terms. And that was, we modified our bylaws recently to allow that. So we had two members that finished up their term, or I should say stepped down. And we would like to thank them for their service. Calvin Lin is one of them and Jennifer Vargo, who's gone to a bigger and better position for the district. So we thank them for their service. We have three new members. We have, I'll start with the returning members that I'm asking you to approve their appointments. That's Matthias Huber as a parent. Sharon Van Kirk is an at-large community member. Now our three new members. Scott Bay is a parent. Steve Reed is also a parent. And one addition to the FBL that we shared with you on Friday. Just today, I was able to secure Jason Wang, who is a member of a business organization. He's a local business owner on First Ave. And so that was, we just agreed today. And so that's not in the FBL, but adding that to your approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Restlin. I need a motion for this item.
I move. I move to approve those individuals. Do I need to say it out? Like, do I have to say all their names? No, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Vargo. Motion is made by Ms. Vargo. And I need a second?
I second the approval of Measure A Oversight Committee Members.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Ms. Fan, you have any comments?
Sure. I just wanted to say just another thank you to all the committee members because I was reading over the resolution and like, it's such a critical part to have community members themselves help spread the message and just to be very clear and very transparent with the community about what we're doing with the money and how their contributions help improve our district. And so we really appreciate like all the work they do and I'm excited for the new committee members.
I agree. Any discussion from the board?
There's nothing left to say after that.
All right. I will call for a vote. All in favor, aye. Say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Item B, Appointment of Measure I Citizens Bond Oversight Committee Members. Ms. Restlin again.
Very similar processes. Actually, written into ed code and into our bylaws, each of these oversight committees have three primary objectives or duties. The first one is to inform the public concerning the district's expenditure of these special tax proceeds. In the previous case, parcel tax. In this one, the facilities bond. The second one is to review expenditure reports produced by the district to ensure that the proceeds are expended only for the purposes set forth when one was approved. And then lastly, to present to the board an annual written report on the committee's review and comments regarding expenditures of those proceeds. So Measure I, again, go back to our 2006 facilities bond. I agree with what Ms. Fan says. The oversight, committee oversight of these funds is incredibly important just to maintain that trust that the community has in the district and our ongoing operation. On Measure I, we have one individual stepping down, having served six years. And that's one of our parents, Ailee Gardea. Thank her for her service. And then we have several returning members of the committee. And they are Susan Lawie, who's an at-large community member, Jennifer Ledesma, a parent, Sonya Martin, an at-large community member, and Stanley Kuhn, a parent. And we have a new member of our committee this year. He's also a parent and that's Philip Gonzalez from Highland Oaks. We do still have one remaining vacancy and that is a member of a taxpayers' association. That's been a difficult one to fill, but we're always looking to fill that if we can. So I ask you to approve those appointments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Restlin. Any questions? And need a motion?
I'll move to approve the Measure I Citizens Bond Oversight Committee Members.
Motion was made by Ms. Yi. And I need a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ying. Ms. Fan, any comments?
Just the same thing. Just thank you to all the members, the new ones and the outgoing members.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the board? Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Passes five oh. Thank you. So items removed from consent calendar. We have no items removed from the consent agenda. And we are two information items. Item A, K-Camp and New Educator Academy Recap. Dr. Mendoza.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening to talk about K-Camp and New Educator Academy. And so I'll first begin talking about K-Camp. And so K-Camp really begins with the superintendent's welcome. I was looking back at our records and I believe we started this in about 2017, 2018. And it really came from Dr. Venazdal's vision to welcome all of our families to the district. And having the K-Camp program was a perfect opportunity because many of our families start kindergarten and they're always so eager to participate in everything in those kindergarten years. And so we really do this to welcome all of our parents, but also introduce them to the K-Camp program. And I want to thank Dr. Venazdal because that evening, he had just was recovering from surgery and he still attended and gave his speech and his welcome to all of our families. We get a great turnout and it's a great event to start off the program. And so it is a three-week program. We recently revised this to Monday through Friday to really be accommodating of parents' schedules, working schedules. And it's been a success. We run it for three weeks and we hire our AUSD teachers. We try to do that intentionally just to help the students build relationships with staff on campus. So when we are hiring, we try to hire staff that are at the site. So then this way, our students are building those relationships with the teachers already. And so its purpose is really to acclimate the students and get them used to school and used to routines. And so originally, it has started in kindergarten, but we have seen a little bit of a decline in enrollment and we do attribute that to the TK enrollment. And then also because of the pandemic, more people traveling with summer travels. They, because they're already participating in TK, they are doing more summer activities. And so I want to thank Mrs. Whitney Chen for providing these photos for me. And you can see these photos really tell the story of K-Camp and all of the different activities that they do. The teachers focus on the fine motor skills, students' fine motor skills. They focus on relationship building among students. They're working on early literacy skills and having a great time. It's amazing, all of the activities the teachers are able to do during that three-week timing. And so what we really want to do, both Mrs. Matera and I are looking to see, to expand the K-Camp program to a TK K-Camp. So then this way, we're welcoming our really young students. So when they start the school year, they are acclimated, they're ready for school, they know their teachers and it's not so scary for them. And we will, we are also looking at continuing K-Camp just so that it's also an opportunity for those students that may not attend TK can attend it when they are entering in kindergarten. So now, moving on to New Educator Academy. So this is a picture from the first day. And here, I really want to thank Mrs. Louise Simmons. She has a contact at Lakeshore. And they were able to give us a donation of all of the bags and inside of the bags, it also had coupons for Lakeshore, which the teachers really appreciated. So on that first day, they received those bags and they also received their Chromebooks and their name badges, along with a program for the day. And so here I have our pictures. I was debriefing with one of our attendings, who is a psych at two of our schools this year. And he mentioned to me how much he really valued the importance of our executive team, taking the time out to have sessions with the teachers, to meet with them and really get to know them. He has been in several different districts before coming to Arcadia. And he said that he's never really met or spoken with the superintendent and assistant superintendents. And so he really valued that and he understood that that's part of our culture and it's who we are as a district. And it builds upon this year's themes of building partnerships because we're doing this work together. And so we have here our welcome from Dr. Huhishu. And then Dr. Forsey does his welcome as well. And Dr. Venazdal also does his welcome. And so we have many welcomes and times for our educators to meet and work with them. And then I know, Mr. Ying, you had asked me during the draft about, you know, with so many new hires, how do we maintain our culture? And, you know, when you first asked me, I had to think about it. But really, it is about those relationships in those sessions. And the fact that we have our staff do a lot of the sessions, they're living out what they do on a daily basis and they're sharing that with their new colleagues. And so that's how we're really able to share with them our values. And so I also wanted to highlight Mr. Brownlee's last year, his last Brownlee Bus Tour. And so this is something that we really enjoy doing. We are very appreciative of the air conditioning in the buses. And we go around and the feedback that I've gotten from the teachers, they do enjoy this. They enjoy being able to go around the community and visit the different sites. And I appreciate our principals because they're so busy opening up the schools, but they take the time to go out and they have their staff and they have their signs cheering them on, welcoming them as we drive by. And we do make a few stops, but we can't stop everywhere. But they're out there saying hello and waving as we drive by. Another important piece of our bus tour is our stop at The Yard at FMOT. And this is very important. Many of the educators, when we come back, return. They give us the feedback that they really enjoy that time. They meet with Mrs. Kathleen Ashworth. And Rudy did our tour this year. And they just really get to know everything that facilities, maintenance, and operation does and how that impacts our classroom. And our educators are very appreciative of that. And I like that we're able to highlight that department during our bus tour. And so here you have some images of some of the sessions. And so these sessions, you know, we take a lot of time to be very intentional about the sessions because there's so many different groups of people, different subjects, different grade levels. And so we focus on our district initiatives and our student subgroups and how do we help them. And then even based on the feedback, they do, we now break up the sessions so that there's a breakout session for high school. New this year, we did a middle school. So Mrs. Siriani and Mrs. Oh did a session on middle school life. We have our high school staff and they come and they do a session for the high school. And that has been very valuable as well, having that time working in their groups to learn about the schools and the cultures there. And so one of our very special things that we do, many thanks to Ryan and Lauren, is, you know, we end it with our draft. And it's a very special event and it just culminates all of the work that we do in those four days. And so one of our DCI interns created the video that highlights the program. Maybe you saw it this weekend online, but we want to make sure that you are able to see it. So Mr. Brownlee will play it for you all.
Arcadia Unified has got some new recruits. The fall semester is right around the corner and our new educators are ready to kick off the school year. The New Educators Academy is not your traditional teacher training program. Our new educators have gone through four long days of intense training and now they've reached the end zone. The schools are recruiting them to their campuses for the fall. So without further ado, let's roll out the red carpet and welcome all of our new educators.
We moved heaven in our crib. Literally. We gave the 4.9th earthquake on day one.
The New Educators Academy has been a hallmark of Arcadia Unified, uniting administrators and new educators in an invigorating ceremony, filled with surprise gifts, beloved mascots, and light-hearted jokes.
Time for a little rookie hazing.
Maybe not that one. Throughout this week, each of the 33 new educators went through comprehensive training to best understand how to work with students and each other, structure curriculum, and exemplify the best values of Arcadia Unified.
Well, Arcadia Unified is just such an inclusive community and they're very supportive. They really want the best for their students. And so for me, as an educator, it's important that I reach even higher heights, you know, and be the best teacher I can be.
He will be teaching fourth grade in Highland Oaks this year. He has a passion for witnessing the growth and development of his students from the beginning of this school year to the end. In his free time, Jayden enjoys reading books.
The onboarding process has been excellent. I've never heard of a district where they have four complete days of onboarding on for educators, which I think is really helpful. It's been very informative. It's been culturally developing, so I understand the culture of Arcadia. And I'm feeling better prepared than I was before.
The draft day was a rewarding way to finish the week of training as Arcadia Unified prides itself on creating strong bonds within our community.
This is my 20th year, going into my 20th year as an educator and I've never experienced anything like this.
It's usually just PD and it's just like talking to you the whole time. It's never something this exciting.
They definitely have the eye of the tiger, the bear, the snakes, lots of other wildlife in the foothills. Entering his 11 season leading the Highlanders, welcome Dr. Benjamin Governor President Ackerman.
It sure was quite the exciting start to an exciting year ahead. Once again, AUSD is proud to welcome all of the new educators and kick off the 2024 to 2025 school year. This has been Avnia Topley and Evelyn Soy, reporting for AUSD today.
And so at the draft, we did give all of our new educators an Arcadia Unified hat. And so we had a few extras, so we wrapped them up, just to be able to give one to each of the board members to protect you from the sun. So thank you. Any questions?
To circle back to the K-Camp TK, so are we thinking we're going to try to pilot that next summer for TK? Is that the goal?
Yes, it is. We are looking at either yet next summer or the following summer. I know there, there's some construction that might happen at one of the sites where we wouldn't be able to have them at all six sites. And so it, it just depends. Like we're looking at numbers, we'll, we'll look at enrollment. But I believe the TK final enrollment of where it's full year is in summer 2026. So, so we may not, yeah, we may not do it until 2026.
And then, you know, some of those kids are really young.
Yeah.
And maybe younger in, you know, the beginning of the summer than they would be when they're starting school. Will that impact whether they can participate or have we not figured that out?
The way we run the program is in order to participate in the program, they have to enroll in the district. So they have to go through the whole enrollment process. So if they meet the enrollment requirements, then they would be able to. Cause that means that they'll be, that they're fully registered for TK.
Thank you so much, Dr. Mendoza.
Yep.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Mendoza.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, information on B, BP 0510, school accountability, accountability report card revision, first reading, Mr. Anderson.
Hello. With lots of policies, if I could just go through them one by one, like usually it is sort of as a, as a package, if that's okay. And you can ask questions as we go. Thanks. I did want to start just by saying that, you know, we did work really hard over the summer on, on all these policies and that's why we have so many. And we always follow the CSBA guidelines in our review and also make sure that our policies are in line with education code and our current district practices. And one of the things that we talked about when we were reviewing these in the executive team was that we really work hard to maintain that proper balance between sort of legal mandates and feasible implementation. And so we really do spend our time and meet with people to make sure that we're following the law, but we're also not writing down things that we're, we're not going to be able to do. And I think that's something that goes a long way when you develop policy, right? You try to put things, you know, that are impossible into practice, then it's really not worth having that in your, in your policy. So with that said, Board Policy 0510, School Accountability Report Cards. This policy was revised to basically meet new legal requirements. It requires that accountability report cards be issued annually. We already did that. It also requires that they be available on or before February 1st of each year. That's pretty much the, the changes with that. Board Policy 5113, Absences and Excuses. We just updated that policy, I don't know if you remember, not too long ago. However, it needed to be updated again because there was some, some new legislation that came through. The update was pretty minimal, basically language around excusable absences and the requirement to provide reasonable equivalent assignments for missed work. Those were pretty much the changes added to that policy. Board Policy 5113.7, Weapons and Dangerous Instruments. This policy was updated to include wording regarding weapons and dangerous instruments that's more explicit and clear. Also, the policy updates were around the role of the teacher in immediately confiscating and reporting weapons and dangerous instruments. And that was our practice, but again, legislation changed, so we've included that into our policy. Next one, Board Policy 5145.6, Parent Guardian Notifications. This one just required language regarding district and school communications in ways that parents and guardians with disabilities can access when needed. And then it also added the word families in addition to parents and guardians. Next is Board Policy 6000, Concepts and Roles. The language of the current policy was really outdated and needed to be updated. There are no real major changes to our current practices or what we do. Basically, the updated language was to basically align with current terms. Next is BP 6164.2, Guidance and Counseling Services. This was a major policy revision. It aligned with current legislation regarding counselors and school counseling programs. The policy is now aligned with MTSS as well. It outlines a broad range of activities counselors should engage in with students. It also defines educational and career counseling in addition to academic counseling. And it defines nondiscriminatory practices and requirements for parent notifications and consent. And the policy, policy also includes crisis counseling and teacher-based advisory programs. And lastly, Board Policy 5177, Summer Learning Programs. We removed an outdated note that was included in the policy. It just didn't exist anymore in legislation. And then the policy aligns with the LCAP and MTSS-based summer supplemental instruction. And the policy also lists the prioritization process for determining which students are invited to participate in district-funded summer school. And that's all of the policies. I don't know if you have any questions on any of them?
Questions from the board?
Okay. We would like to bring them all back on consent if possible.
I think that's okay with everybody?
And I would like to add that as you review them, we got, we were able to get some comments and find some, some little errors that we corrected. So all of those, those typos and things like that have been addressed. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Anderson. All right, we're on to I, Gift Offers, 2023-2024 Fiscal Year Report, Mr. Eslen.
Yes, so we like to, over the summer, just provide a annual report of the gift offers that we bring to you on a monthly basis normally during the year. So the, the report that's in the agenda, there's three pages there. The first page shows all the donations that are greater than $10,000. If you look at it, you see a lot of Arcadia Educational Foundation and a lot of support groups at the high school and also, you know, growth, PTA. Moving on to the second page, we do split out all of the donations from AEF. By school and it totals $180,000. Obviously that's wonderful and we're grateful for their support. And then the last page of the report just shows our annual totals going back to 2010. So in last year, 2324, we had a total of $435,000 in donations, which again, we're very grateful for and appreciate. At the bottom there, you'll see that on average, the donations over those years have been about $800,000. We've definitely seen a dip since COVID. But again, we're grateful for all the donations that we receive.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Eslen. Okay, Item J, Board Member Governance Handbook, First Reading, Dr. Vindalstol.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to set the context for this work, we spent a lot of time together as, as board members, executive team, staff, and especially board members just attending events together. And prior to the pandemic, I don't believe in my tenure here, anyone ever said, hey, you know, where's this written down? Or, you know, where, you know, I know we do this, can I find that somewhere? It was just all shared informally amongst board members. A lot of our board members came up through the ranks of PTA and different events. And so they just kind of shared that knowledge and there was a lot of informal onboarding that just happened. Then the pandemic hit and we onboarded two board members during the pandemic that we weren't allowed to meet physically. So they started their positions and we weren't together and there was no informal anything. And all of a sudden it was, well, where's, you know, what, where's the rules on this or how do we do this? And guess what? Not written down anywhere. So it served well for all those years, the informal, but it's just, it's time that we just start to kind of formalize what so many processes that we've been doing, protocols, agreements, norms. I mentioned CSBA earlier because of the Masters in Governance, Governance. They are very clear on what the role of the board is and the board members and how does the superintendent's role play into that and that relationship. So just a lot of good stuff for the community about the, the role of board members. And then also, that's at the state level, but then also locally, what are, you know, what are our agreements? What are our commitment? And I mentioned one earlier, like, you know, new board members would come on and, and attend all of the Masters in Governance classes. So all of those things, where does that live? So the idea of this Board Member Handbook came about and requested the board. And so we've been working on that, assembling the content. Then comes process, you know, what's the best way to kind of present this so that it's a, you know, ongoing kind of live document? Because, you know, things change and we come up with new things. It's like, oh yeah, we do that, but we, we never wrote that down, let's add that. So I did, the, the next best thing was, hey Greg, you're good at websites. Let's take a look at some different structures at different districts that already have this. You know, what's, what looks user-friendly, so, you know, the process side of it, not the content. And we, we found a couple that we really liked and Greg was able to take then the content we had been working on and put it in what I, I hope is, is will be a user-friendly way for our board members to access it as well as the public. Because I think sometimes the general public has questions about school boards, the role of, of boards and that relationship. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Greg.
Thank you. Yeah, so what we did is we found a, a copy of a, a board governance document that was very similar to the values of our home. This week we copied the entire thing exactly, but it was all based on a government, school board association's recommendations from what that school taught. We went through a collaboration process, going through and making sure aligned with our values, our expectations. And then we coded into a draft on our website. Again, Scott, if you go ahead and scroll down a little bit, I'll walk you through it. One thing I want to make sure is that when you're looking for a specific item on that document, you don't have to read through everything. So we have the broad categories as you go down. And let's say, for example, you want to find out what's the role of the board president. Scott, if you click on that one at the bottom of that screen, he'll actually share the principle and the protocol. In other words, what do we fundamentally believe about this role and then what's it look like specifically in the protocol? They do this for a large number of items there. So that's the government's, government's document. We also have protocols about how the board works with the superintendent. Again, you know, we learned this during our Masters of Governance training. That's such an important connection is the role of superintendent and the role of the board. So it really goes into detail on that. Very proud of both the content and the format of this, but this is the first reading. So if you have any feedback as you read through a copy, please reach out to Dr. Vindalstol online. We would be happy to talk about it, to make modifications. But we hope that this will be one opportunity for us to have something to reference for future board members to be able to read through. And I've heard over the years that, so you have got a lot of questions about what board members do. We're hoping to have this available for anyone in the community or whatever the question would be directed to this website.
So this is not live yet?
This is not live, thank you.
So once it's approved by the board, we'll make edits after feedback and then we'll go live after it's approved. If you choose to have it back on at the next board meeting. And we were gonna, we were trying to figure out how to redline and stuff, but I think right, we decided it would just be best to just email any edits, any additions, things that you're like, oh, we've, you know, this was left out or we think this would be in there. Of course, any edits that you see of what's in there through Greg and myself, we'll make sure we get those edits.
Any other questions?
Sure, so I, I love that we're finally pulling this together. Cause it is, as a new board member, a little overwhelming. I think this is going to be a very helpful tool as we move forward. I love that it's a living document. We are seeing this as going to be under the board section on the district website, probably.
That's right, we're going to add it, board goals and the whole board section.
Okay, so easy to find, awesome. And then like you were saying, we could change, it can evolve. Will we put that on a kind of a rolling schedule where the board will look at this regularly? How, how are we going to approach that, do we think?
It's a good question, I think, just at two ways. First one is that if we see something that's just part of our protocols, we want to add to it and we're all in agreement. It is a working document, we can update that. But I think the importance of, of why we're bringing it forward as a formal document is really for the board annually. So, so this would be something at our first meeting in August, just like tonight. Each year annually, we would bring this forward. And of course, you know, highlight any additions that we've made over the summer at your request. But the importance is that the board members are, each of you are committing, recommitting to the handbook, which means, you know, the norms, the practices, the protocols that you have created. And so it's the, you know, how we're going to do business together, what we're going to do when we're together, you know, from communications, et cetera. So, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that recommitment is important for us to be always on the same page. It also allows us the opportunity to look at it every year, right? So it's, we don't forget about it and make sure that it's up to date for, you know, another once-in-a-lifetime pandemic comes around and can't get on board like surely not.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I agree. I, I'm happy that we finally have something on paper and I love that it's going to be on the website so that we can refer to it and have others. Cause I know we always, all of us get questions from the community about what we do and what our roles are. So that will be really helpful. So I appreciate the work that you put into getting that all set up for us.
And I do thank the rest of the executives because we also go look at it, make sure that the quarters of the role that we're part of were reflected appropriately in the document.
Great, thank you.
All right, so we are.
We'll take those edits and unless I hear differently, we'll bring it back for approval. Maybe we'll take another look at it with, you know, its entire few weeks.
Great.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Dr. Vindalstol, and back to you for department updates.
All right, again, so department updates. This is our opportunity as an executive team to update the board on what's been going on since the last board meeting. So it's not to be everything that's going on, but really to catch you up in between board meetings. Cause a lot's been going on, especially since we didn't have a meeting and I appreciate the board agreeing because everyone was very busy getting ready for the first day of school. So, but this is our first meeting in August, so there might be more than normal to share. But first I would just like to say thank you to all of our staff, principals, our parents. This has been an incredibly smooth opening and I use, always use that visual of the duck that on the top of the water, it just looks smooth and it's going upstream. But we know under this, you know, under the water, behind the scenes, there's just an incredible amount of work that gets done. You know, every variable from the safety, the transportation of how to get kids to school, you know, master schedules, you know, the rooms clean, the campus is clean, safe, ready to go. So all of our maintenance and operations staff all summer. Just, you could go on and on that on that first day when kids are in classrooms and there's teaching and learning happen. You just know that there's an incredible army of work behind that. So just thank you to the entire community for a smooth opening and our kids. community for a smooth opening and our kids appreciate it. So thank you. And, uh, we'll start with, uh, fiscal services. Mr. Esslin?
Thank you. Uh, and I will actually start with facilities and operational services. I think it was back in July or June, maybe I shared a whole laundry list of summer projects. Uh, I can, I can say that all of them are now done. Uh, Bolton Stalker playground was finished up this weekend, so that's up and running. The next playground, the next project that's going to start is long away. There were some delays there with the approval of materials, but that, I believe, will start this week. So we'll get that done as quickly as they can. Uh, last night, we had our facilities bond, citizens oversight committee meeting and, uh, Tony Barrios, our director, uh, provided an update to all the committee members. Of the updates that we posted on the facilities website, the pictures are amazing. The shade structures on the play structures that we've been waiting for are all mostly installed. So I encourage you to go over to the website and take a look. A lot of beautiful pictures of all the great work, uh, that we've been doing over the summer. Uh, moving on to fiscal services, uh, just a couple comments about, uh, audits, audit findings. Uh, these go back to the time of COVID where we got a lot of money, a very short amount of time, uh, back in that, at that time, in the 2122 audit year. We had two audit findings. Uh, the first one was for an in-person instruction grant where the state of California gave us money to return to in-person instruction and they had set a deadline. Uh, here in Arcadia, we sort of developed our own plan and our own timeline that made sense for us. So we actually started our, uh, middle and high schools about five days later than the state deadline. So they gave us all the money upfront and they've now, we've been audited. We didn't dispute the audit finding, we, we agreed with it. Uh, and so now the state has sent us the, they actually sent us a bill, an invoice to pay back this hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So this was expected, planned for it, everything was fine. In that same year, we had a second audit finding for, uh, what was called the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant. Not the program that we have now that's ongoing. This was one-time money. And again, it was sort of about returning to in-person instruction, providing that additional support to get everything back up and running. Uh, one of the requirements of the grant was that we were only allowed to spend a certain percentage prior to returning to in-person instruction. Well, in the, in the shuffle of everything at that time, uh, we spent too much of the money too soon. Uh, we actually, this was pointed out to us at the time by our auditors. Again, we, we agreed with the auditors and at that time, we refunded that money back into this program and then spent it appropriately within the, the correct timeframe. Uh, but it was reported as an audit finding. And then to our surprise, the state of California came back and said, you now owe us this nine hundred thousand dollars, even though the auditor and the LA County Office of Education all agreed that we had, you know, substantially made this program whole by refunding this money back into the program and then spending it appropriately. So it's been almost a year process now. We, we appealed that audit finding. Uh, we actually had to retain counsel to help us with the, uh, education audit appeals panel, which is a department up in Sacramento. Uh, and just last week, we got the letter saying that they agree with us that we had made the program substantially whole and did not have to, in effect, pay this nine hundred thousand dollars a second time. So I, I did, uh, I won't even say a little dance of joy, I did a real big dance of joy. And this may be the first time you all are hearing of this because I kind of kept it quiet and thought about what was going to happen because I thought we were going to be okay in the end, but, I mean, nine hundred thousand dollars, that like had me worried there. But in the end, reason saw the light of day and it worked out okay. So that's great news. Uh, and then lastly, nutrition services. We have Kathleen and her staff, I should say, have really hit the ground running this year. You may remember, pre-COVID, we were serving three thousand thirty-three hundred meals a day. And then COVID happened and now breakfast and lunch is free for all students. And last year, I was often I would share the meal count. And for Kathleen, when we went over six thousand meals a day, like that was, that was a big deal. She couldn't believe that we'd actually, we're actually serving that many meals. Typically, the school year kind of starts off slow and the, the meal count builds as the year goes on. Well, we're already at six thousand meals a day. And so the, the, the interest in the demand of breakfast and lunch for our, our TK to twelve students has just really picked off where it left off last year. And they're, Kathleen and her staff are doing an amazing job. Because of the number of meals that we're serving, that program is actually now earning a profit. You may remember, pre-COVID, we had talked about making contribution to support the program. They're now earning a profit. Um, they're looking at what to do with that money. And one of the things that Kathleen has done and continues to do is look at how to expand the staff. Um, in the middle of last year, we added to most of the elementaries a third serving position and that's been real helpful. Um, the other thing that we did, one of the things we talked about doing at the high school is adding serving locations. Uh, and so this year, and this is at the snack shack, we, uh, over the summer, we, we replaced the windows. You probably can't picture this, but there were these little pass-through windows that literally the food wouldn't go through. So we replaced the whole window, the whole thing goes up and down now. And we've started serving lunches out of the snack shack. So that's at least a step towards getting these multiple points of service opened up at the high school. Uh, and so they're work, oh, and, uh, they're working on bringing back sushi too. That's been something that due to, uh, staffing shortages that she's not been able to do, but her plan is to bring that back this year. And I told her, I said, you tell me when you're serving that the first time, because I'm going to be there in line buying an adult meal and the sushi. Uh, but yeah, things are going great with Kathleen and her staff. They're doing a great job. And that's my update. Thank you.
Questions? All right, moving on to educational services, Dr. Forsen?
All right, thank you. We will not be bringing that sushi in the educational services. Um, on, from Andrea, our certificated staff has registered for their SWAG collaboration days. So we ask them at the beginning of the year to put in their preference for the courses being offered. And then Andrea does her magic with the spreadsheet and makes all that make sense for all of us. So thank you, Andrea, for doing that. Um, our first SWAG day is on Thursday, September 12th. So that will be a short day. Uh, kids get out at eleven forty, our staff has a, a lunch period and then they meet in their SWAG groups. Um, in the ed services, we're in the process of administering the initial, um, English language performance assessment.
Okay, California.
California, thank you. I know, we got to explain everything though. California, um, test to our to-be-determined students to identify English learners. And many of those are students who, who enrolled later or right before, um, the school year. So we will test all of those students. Um, again, the LPAC is, um, a much more robust test than the previous, um, tool. And so it takes quite a bit longer to assess these students, but it is a better tool in assessing, um, students. From Patty Matera, we'll be holding a two-day leader in me training for fifty elementary teachers in early October. These are teachers who haven't been trained. And so we have, um, kind of a, a mass of, of teachers now who certainly have learned leader in me at their site. They've picked it up, they've had conversations, but now they'll go through a formal two-day training in that, again, you know, the culture question, how do we maintain? These are some of the ways where we offer these, these robust trainings, um, every few years for teacher, for staff. Google Classroom is having a one-hour professional de- development offered. Uh, Google Classroom, as Scott reported to us, has made some really neat additions. And so we piloted Schoology, uh, last year. That was very hit and miss. So it was about fifty-fifty at best. So we will not be adopting Schoology as the feedback really was, Google Classroom does what we needed to do. We know Google Classroom. Our kids and our parents know Google Classroom. And so, um, that's nice because Google Classroom right now is free, um, and they continue to update it. And so I know one of the concerns of, when we look at platforms and moving away from Google Classroom possibly is, will it become kind of a dead service where it lives there, but it doesn't update, it doesn't provide new things? Um, but clearly, Google's invested in that and is continuing to add resources to that, which is amazing, again, for continuity and that all of our, our educational community knows that platform. Um, we are starting our administrative induction program, which again, um, Andrea and I know Kevin have worked really hard to get that through. A lot of back and forth with the state about requirements and, and how to make that happen. And we, um, have three of our candidates, so three of our new principals, uh, will be starting that and clearing their administrative credential. And again, that, that, uh, is a savings of probably ten to fifteen thousand dollars for staff and a service we'll be, uh, providing. And I would say a better service doing it internally than going off to, to, um, you know, a college somewhere and doing, you know, activities that really aren't connected to their work in Arcadia. So very excited about that. We have a hundred and seventy early adopters who will be, um, trying the new Power School Elementary Report Card System this year. We piloted in the third trimester last year, it was six teachers. And it was, um, the feedback was very positive. So we have a hundred and seventy. That'll be using it this year for the entire year. And then our entire system in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, sorry, entire elementary report card system will be in that Power School program. So excited about that. Um, from Jim Anderson, schools are focusing on attendance this year to reduce, uh, chronic absenteeism. As we've learned, that has been an issue across the state and really across the nation, uh, since COVID. And so, um, our school sites are using several strategies, including early communication regarding attendance, parent meetings, student rev- attendance review meetings, otherwise known as SART meetings, which you may hear about, um, and attendance data reviews. And attendance is actually part of our MTSS plan now at school sites. That's part of our, our tiered plan. So excited about that, um, and the work that our, our schools are doing. School safety plans have been updated to be in compliance with new legislati- legislative requirements. Almost done. From Daniel Hacking, middle schools met during the summer to plan for their MTSS, um, plans at their schools this year. Um, it was very nice to have that whole group together here for the morning and talk about kind of the MTSS pathway. Um, Patty was in there as well. We talked about some of the work we've done in the elementary schools and that we're very purposely trying to mirror that pathway in the, in the middle school environment. So, um, it's not something brand new for everyone. If you have an elementary friend, it's a good time to reach out and, and talk with them. And so, uh, again, to try to provide that continuity between our elementary and our middle schools. So excited about that work. Um, they then spent the afternoon, uh, talking about specifically at their site, what that would look like. Um, we're continuing to work with Hazel Health as our partner for students to receive online counseling. Last year, we served over forty students using Hazel Health. And very exciting, AOSD will be hosting the Lego Consortium in November. Uh, the collaboration between over twenty school dis- districts is a chance to learn about utilizing Lego robotic technology in the classroom and sharing best practices. And this came, um, out of a meeting that we had, thanks to Alex Wurzakin, um, who set it up for the ed services team to meet with the Lego team and it ended up with us hosting the consortium. So excited about that work. And that's my update for today.
All right. And, uh, just in case anyone isn't familiar with SWAG, it's, uh, that Forsen mentioned, it, it stands for our small working Arcadia groups. So our sites have minimum days where they're doing site-specific work across grade levels. And then there's, uh, minimum days for the whole district, uh, so we can collaborate across the district, across schools. Um, and so, uh, we call those our SWAG day, small working Arcadia groups. So, thank you. Um, before I turn it on to Dr. Hrishu, I, I, I wanted to mention that on Thursday, August twenty-second, uh, which was during our first full day, I mean, fir- first full week of school, um, we had our first, uh, PTA, uh, meeting of the year. Um, but it, we also integrated with that our annual, uh, PTA presidents and principals meeting. And we do that twice a year. We do one in the fall and then we do one in the spring. Um, the overall goal is to just, uh, pause life for a moment and give time, uh, time for our principals and our, uh, PTA presidents to just spend that time together. They're so busy organizing, when they get together, it's about an agenda. You know, they're planning something for the kids and enrichment activity, whatever. Uh, so time for them to get together and, um, i- it, it's unique because we have all the sites in one room. So they can share, you know, what's working at your school, what's working over here, and they can share best practices. But for this meeting, we moved it up and that's why I mentioned it was the first full week. I, I, I felt really bad to do that, but there was a reason behind it. We really wanted to share, you know, this, we're celebrating healthy partnerships and PTA is one of those special partners that we've had, um, forever that, that, um, you know, we, that provide those army of volunteers to open our schools. But we wanted to make sure that all of our PTA presidents, uh, uh, clearly understood the why behind Measure AS for Arcadia schools, uh, Safe Arcadia Schools. Uh, you know, they are our ambassadors, they are the ones, the, the trusted adults that when, you know, not everyone can, has the ability to be, uh, over-involved. So, you know, they go to those PTA presidents and they're like, hey, tell me about, you know, about this. And a lot of the presidents will tell me, a lot of people will just come up and say, are, are you okay with this? If you are, I, I'm okay, you know, because they trust them. So we just really wanted to make sure that, that the facts, uh, behind the board's intent and why made this courageous decision to, uh, put Measure AS on, uh, the November fifth election, that that was understood. And as they go out, we had a guest speaker, Derek Esslin, uh, came in and was able to share some information, some facts and, uh, just, you know, share, uh, answer any questions that we had. So, um, and then we, uh, worked on one prompt because we didn't have a lot of time, but it was just simple. If, uh, if at the end of the year, you were able to say as a PTA president, we had a very successful year at, you name the site, Camino Grove, first app, you know, what would, what would be the why behind that? What would have caused it to be successful? And, uh, it was, it was wonderful to, to hear and then they did elbow, you know, kind of partners with the principals and the presidents. And, you know, we heard comments like, um, every kid would feel connected. Um, we have more volunteers, we have more PTA volunteers, meaning more parents are coming in and getting involved and finding out, um, how they can be a part of helping all the kids at the school. Um, students feeling valued, you know, enrichment activities, uh, where every kid feels valued and has opportunities, um, for that at their school. So it's just a, a wonderful day. I want to thank everyone. I know, um, for the, for the principals, it's a very busy week, but to take that time and of course, our PTA presidents. And, and I want to thank, um, our president this year of our, our, Arcadia Council PTA, Tracy Denson-Hung. Tracy's wonderful and we're off to a great start. So with that, Dr. Hrishu, Human Resource Services?
So first, I'll report on behalf of Erica Newkirk, uh, for Health Services. Health Services has been busy working towards a safe and healthy start to the school year. This is the second year that we have been able to have health office assistants working prior to the start of the school year. These additional work hours help our team to collect and update immunization records, create health plans for students with health needs and to complete necessary inventories of supplies. This has made for a very smooth start to the year for students, staff and families. Uh, also, Health Services wants to recognize all the hard work that goes into a safe start to the school year. First and foremost, we are grateful to all of our families for taking the time to collect doctor's notes, medication orders and immunization records. We appreciate your efforts and your partnership. We also want to acknowledge all of our colleagues at the school sites and within other departments and, um, and all that they do to keep our students safe. Moving on to special education, on behalf of Dr. Catherine Mahoney, we had a wonderful start to the school year. A huge thank you to MOT for ensuring students and families had a smooth transportation experience from the fir- uh, very first day. Uh, we are excited to have added a second adult transition program, uh, class this year as part of our SELPA range of classes. And that's, uh, a high school class or a class at the high school, rather. Uh, prior to the start of the school year, principals and assistant principals participated in a special education learning series. Uh, thanks to Kevin, Derek, Sarah Torres and Tracy Sergi for sharing their expertise, uh, and to the principals and assistant principals for, uh, a great three mornings of learning. We were able to focus on a variety of topics in relation to special education such as fiscal topics, supporting staff, engaging and empowering families and school teams, CalPads and Power School and curriculum and instruction. From an HR perspective, as the enrollment dust begins to settle with, uh, you know, new families enrolling and seeing who shows up... and seeing who shows up to schools, as of today, we are two students over projections, but we are forty-four students over our enrollment from this time last year. So we're up slightly. Which is good news for us. HR is tracking completion rates of the mandatory mandated reporter trainings, which all employees must have each year by law. Approximately two-thirds of our employees have already completed it. So thank you to everyone who's done that. Our deadline, our final deadline for one hundred percent completion is going to be on September sixth. So that's next Friday. And that concludes my report.
I had a couple of questions. So I forgot to ask Derek. You said we had engaged counsel. Is that expensive to engage counsel to defend or to, to appeal? I'm just wondering.
I'll, I'll answer it. Yes, it's expensive, but the return on investment was incredible.
It's worth it. Okay.
They, at one point, the Education Audit Appeal Panel had come back and suggested that you could settle for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
We would pay a hundred and eighty?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the nine hundred, and then it kind of became a negotiation and that's what the attorney.
Clarified for me is that at some point, it sort of transitions into like, let's set aside the law and what's right and let's talk about a settlement amount. And so at that point, well, there's a longer version to the story. But at that point, my decision was attorney fees less than a hundred and eighty thousand dollars is a win. Now, that's still way too much money to spend on this process. In the end, I think we will have paid attorneys certainly less than ten thousand dollars and probably closer to five. They, they wrote a letter for us. They followed up with the Audit Appeals Panel a couple of times. We had some meetings and phone conversations and emails. So we'll, we'll probably get one more invoice, but certainly nowhere near what the state was asking us to pay.
That was exactly what I was looking for. Thank you. And then I had two other questions. One for Brent, with the elementary Power School Report Card. I'm familiar with the middle school and high school and the grades. How is it going to work for the elementary schools? Because they don't do the grades, right? Every elementary school does not do great. I mean, they do the meets, needs and I don't, I can't.
Yeah. So the, the, the way, what parents see in the report card really isn't changing as much. It's more the interface is Power School. So the interface for the teachers in the report card is Power School, not necessarily like changing how we're assessing students or meets, doesn't meet, exceeds standards.
So they're not going to be inputting grades like they do in the middle and the high school that they'll just, they'll download the PDF from there?
No. It's going to be like, you did not meet standards today. What's going on?
It's going to be a, a PDF at the end of the semester.
I would love that for my kids. I'd love to build them. No, but it will be essentially the same timelines. It's just the interface. So what we did wasn't supported anymore. So we didn't really have an option. Thank goodness we're with Power School that has a good option already built in. But obviously transitioning, I don't know, what do we have, a hundred and ninety elementary, two hundred elementary teachers? Into that in a fairly seamless way. Again, Patty has done a miraculous job of navigating that.
Also giving the opportunity for, right now, all the report cards are open. So like music teachers, young music teachers can go into the report card. And sometimes things get changed because they're all working on the same. Now they all have their own class. So they all live in a class of yours. But there's so many great changes in the system that you need to do for teachers.
Okay.
And then in the next few years, we'll talk about actually changing some of the content.
What, what system do you use to actually generate those report cards? Because they're, they've got a, a format, right? Like?
The current report card?
Yeah.
Scott.
It's a system that Greg wrote many, many years ago. It's on a server that's no longer supported in a, you know, language that's difficult to change. And so it's something we've been trying to move away from for several years, but it's been difficult.
Oh, okay. In-house. Got it. And then my, my last comment was for you, Kevin, was just that forty-four over enrollment. I, I, when I talk to people in other districts nearby, it's, it, everybody's in pain. And I'm so thankful that we don't have to suffer that here. And so thank you, everyone, for.
Yeah. You're very welcome. We're a bit of an anomaly. We saw this two years ago when we were, had increased enrollments and everyone around us, the majority of districts around us were in declining. And then we thought, gosh, is this just a one-year thing? And then last year, we had the same thing happen where we had, you know, increased enrollment, everyone else was declining. So we weren't sure what was going to happen this year. So the fact that we are forty-four, which isn't as high of an increase as we've had the past two years, but we'll take it, right? So yeah, it's good news for us.
In our CSBA training, that was one of the topics that we were supposed to like pow-wow on and like talk to other people. And everybody wanted to know our secret.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm done.
Okay. If you wanted a rebuttal or no, I'm just kidding. Sorry about that. Strategy and Innovation, Greg Gazanian.
Just so you know, I started that report card system in college. So I will give specific years, but it's been a while.
It was hugely cutting edge at the time.
Very much so. So just a few, a few quick updates. First, I'm on the Governance Handbook. We already talked about kind of this is what it's going to look like. But just more broadly, you know, in some ways, we went through similar process with our values. Everyone kind of had a feeling for what our values were. We knew how we acted. And yet something different happened when we put it on paper, put it on the wall and said, we're all going to live to this. It means that even when it's tough, we have that actual physical reminder of who we are and how we ought to act. In a lot of ways, I believe this document will be very similar. We, all, everyone in this room has a sense of kind of who we are and how we act, but we'll also need a reference to, even when it's different people in the room, even when we're in new circumstances. So very excited to continue to bring some form to this ethereal thing that's an important culture throughout Arcadia. So very excited about that. In terms of technology, we launched a new program over the last couple of weeks called ClassWise. We have an internet filter register called LineWise, which we're required to have, which keeps our kids as safe as we can by blocking certain websites. ClassWise is an additional part of LineWise, which allows teachers to have more control over what the kids are using their Chromebooks for in their classrooms. So for example, they can see what the kids are doing at their desk. They can block certain websites or open up certain websites within reason. And they can do what's called focus time for their students if they just want the students to be able to go to one of a few classrooms. We've had software for a while that allowed teachers to push out different sites and to see what the kids were doing. But this one will allow some additional ability for teachers to not allow the students onto other sites. So feedback's been very positive so far. Again, we want to give teachers that ability to be able to help focus the students in the classroom. So we'll continue to share what that's like. That's been very popular so far. And finally, I'll share something I got to see, right, leading up to the first day of school. If you can imagine, a ceiling tile open, some cables are hanging down, the clock is ticking behind this person. It sounds like a movie. That was actually a first day for our IT department. So we had some cable link go out at the high school. In fact, it took out all of F Row. We found this out the day before. And I just have to deeply appreciate our team. And that included technology, made it's facilities and operations. Everyone got together, started at five AM that morning and they were rewiring and pulling wiring through the ceiling of F Row, getting everything back up. And it literally was like five minutes, I think, before school was starting. Is that right, Scott? When they plugged in the last cable and things came back online. So it's, it's never a dull moment. But I just know, I hate to do the comparison, but I'm going to do it. You know, there's a lot of places where it's just acceptable that classrooms are not online for the first day of school. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. We'll get to it at some point. That's not what it's like here. I'm proud to work in a place where we're going to do what we need to do to make sure these essential resources are available, even if we have to run new wire and we have to, we get up early and make those connections. So huge thanks to Brian Anderson and the rest of the TIS team and certainly the Facilities and Operations team who were there to make it happen. And that's it for me.
Any questions? All right. Communications, Ryan Ferram.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Like to thank everyone for their participation in our eleventh year of Arcadia First Day. That was amazing. We gathered over five hundred photos. A huge thanks to Lauren. It is a tedious task importing, downloading and uploading all the photo submissions that we get. But she did an incredible job, responded to each person that sent in their photos. So it's just a great way to kick off the year. I know most of us were at school sites and seeing what the principals do to welcome the students and the families on the first day. They have signs and places where you can take photos and mascots and all while dealing with crying kids who are at school for the first time. I wasn't at, at this school, but I heard the story of, you know, two were crying. And it was a, it was a tough situation because they didn't know who to console more because one was the kid and one was the parent. And so what do we do? But it was just remarkable to see ten minutes after the first bell of the first day, some kids have never been in school. There's like maybe one kid in the hallway trying to escape and everything else is just going like it's week ten. So that was amazing to see. And thanks to everyone to help make that a special day. Another special day will be Thursday, October third, Staff Appreciation Night at the high school. We'll have our tailgate. We'll go to the game. We'll bring everyone, all the staff from all over the district and their families to enjoy food, games, raffle and all that fun stuff. So I sent the calendar, but you should all have that. Hope to see everyone there. I loved Andrea's presentation and including the video by our interns Evelyn and Uvni. That's just a remarkable piece of journalism that you don't see at the high school level and how, how well that was put together in a three-minute piece telling a comprehensive program, four-day new educator academy. And just you got the sense of like, if, if you were there or not, like, wow, I learned like the different sessions and how people thought about it and what was involved. So Evelyn and Uvni, that's just amazing work and glad they got to do that and attend it. And it was an amazing four days. Daniel, be quiet. Imagine Magazine, volume four is out. Very thrilled about this, speaking of our interns, Elena and Rihanna specifically. And Elena was here with ASB. She's the Senior Historian Commissioner. Did so much work with this. And also like to thank Lauren for all her copy editing. And Connie Chu, who works with Derek, is an amazing copy editor. So this is a, a team project. And this is our biggest volume yet, fifty-two pages. I guarantee if you read, read this, you will learn things about the district you never knew before. There's stories about programs, our cross-age, the invitational, Badminton. There's information about the bond. You can enroll QR code and enroll in our schools here. There's the jobs link. So you got, I'll get you guys all copies. But if you're doing meetings, talking to, you know, PTA groups or whatever, this is a good talking piece, which has a ton of information about our district links and all that. So it's a good resource. And really appreciate all the work the interns did on this and all of them really contribute to it because they're, they're writing the stories, doing the photos and there's lots, lots of things in there. Speaking of DCI, we have our interviews Thursday for our new DCIers. So we're looking forward to that. We got a lot of applications, had a big informational meeting last week at the high school and got a lot of interest. So we'll be interviewing a bunch on Thursday and then we'll be going to Arcadia High School, back to school night Thursday evening. And that's my report.
All right. That concludes our reports. Thank you. Do you have a question? I'm sorry. I skipped that.
I have a question for you. Do you have a digital copy of the Imagine Magazine or are they all hard copies?
We always do a digital copy. We don't do a digital copy right away because we want people to come and get the hard copy first, which by the way, we have available here. So at the district office, if people want to get them, I'm glad you asked this question. And then there'll be copies available at all the school sites by the end of this week. And then probably in about two weeks, we'll do the digital version release of it. But we always do a digital version. The past three volumes are on our website as well, but we will have one available.
On the AUSD.net website or on the DCI specific website?
On the AUSD website.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Van Oostdahl and everybody. Are we, we are on to consent items. I need a motion for consent items A through O, please.
I move to approve consent items A through O.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Chavez. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Passes five O. And we are on to comments of the board. Actually, let's start with Ms. Fan.
All right. Obviously, it's the first day back to school. And I think this year in particular, the energy is up really high like earlier. Oh, by the way, sorry, I forgot this. First of all, congratulations to Ms. Margot and Mr. Gazanian. It's incredible. And back to what I was talking about. I feel like this year in particular, I just felt that the energy was very high. Like earlier, when we were talking about the new staff training, like, training doesn't sound like a very high intensity word, but seeing all that energy makes like me excited because like the staff and the students are being greeted with such enthusiasm. And it reminded me of like my time at freshman orientation or like the registration days. And so really, everyone just puts in so much work behind the scenes so that students like me and my peers are able to have such a smooth sailing process. And I really appreciate that at this district.
Thank you, Ms. Fan. Ms. He?
Yeah, it was an exciting week, just being able to go back on campuses, see all the students and the staff. Really excited to be back. I was able to check out Arcadia High School and First Avenue. And yeah, I, I agree. I think the energy this year has definitely surpassed last year. So I think it's going to be a great year. Some things to report on on my end. Oh, well, first of all, I want to just thank the school site councils for all their hard work in putting the SARS together. Those are, I mean, lengthy documents. I know a lot of work and effort was put into last year. And reading through it, it's long, but I appreciate just being able to see sort of the data and, you know, where our schools are at. So thank you again to school site councils. I, the first meeting of the year that I attended was the Arcadia High School Music Club Exec Board Meeting. And it's a really great group of parents this year. They're just so excited. There's some new parents. And what I love is they really, I think their theme this year is really like engagement and trying to get the new parents engaged. So they're doing all these new things, like using WhatsApp and trying to create smaller groups within the different music areas. And there's a lot of that's going, like really exciting things going on. All the music summer camps went really well. They're really excited about the freshmen, the freshmen that are coming in for all the music, the different music, trying to find the word, areas. Band has a possibility of doing a new competition this year in Utah. So that should be interesting. Orchestra is really excited. They're going to have this amazing concert this year featuring this rock violinist, Mark Wood, who's supposed to be like this amazing guy. So they were saying tickets are going to go fast. When you see them on sale, grab them when you can. Another exciting thing about Orchestra is that they were invited to perform at Carnegie Hall in the spring, which is an amazing opportunity and a great honor. So they're super excited and, you know, ready to get to work and perfect their music pieces. And this was really cool. Choir is planning a trip to Europe over spring break. And they're going to visit Austria, Czech Republic and Prague. So please support the students because I think they will be doing fundraising to pay for that. And when I have more information, I will definitely let everybody know. So a lot going on this year for music, of course. And then I also attended the AEF meeting last week with Dr. Van Oostdahl, which is another great meeting. Also a great group of parents that are doing amazing things and really want to just continue to get the AEF message out there. They have a new website. So new online donation processing, which they're hoping they'll be able to get more donations. They did want to announce their You and Me Grants. Applications are opening up tomorrow. They're actually extending the application period a little bit just to give people a little bit more time. It'll end October twenty-eighth. And yeah, they're hoping they'll get a lot of responses this year. And then an exciting part is they're going to be starting these educational seminars for parents and students, which I think parents. And then, an exciting part is they're going to be starting these educational seminars for parents and students, um, which I think parents and students, especially in the high school, are gonna be excited about. The first one that they're planning is in October, and when I have the date, I'll let you know. Um, looks like they're inviting, um, professors and administrators from different colleges, so, uh, UC Berkeley, I guess, is gonna be coming in October. So, and then they're planning on Caltech for the next one, and AI Professor, talking about the AI field to parents and students, and then hopefully February, um, they're gonna have UCLA come. So, I think it's gonna be a great way to get the AEF name out there and, you know, kind of just educate parents on what AEF is all about and the support that they give our schools, so. And that is it for me right now, so, um, welcome back, everybody, hope everyone has a great year, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Ee, Ms. Fargo.
Um, okay, uh, I wrote down the things that I have attended, which are a lot this year, um, I've never attended a lot of these things. Um, I went to the New Educator Academy, and I got to participate in their Restorative Practices Training, which was great. I got to meet a lot of the new educators, so that was fun, and I got to be kind of like in a peer level and learn about them, so that was great. Um, and then I went to the Celebration Day that we showed the video of, and I, I've never been to that before, and it was great, and I loved your stuff, Ryan. Had lunch with people, and that was wonderful. Um, then, uh, just personally, I've been having, um, meetings with each of the, uh, Assistant Superintendents, and I appreciate each of your time, uh, like an hour and a half, two hours, that you each spent with me to, to educate me beyond my MIG training, so I appreciate that very much. Let's see, uh, I went to the back-to-school lunch that they had, uh, for the district, uh, who was there with us? Lee was there, Fenton, were you there? Yes, yes, I think that was who was there, that the Lions Club sponsored, that was great, I got to clap for the, for the, for the, for, yeah, a lot of clapping, and I got to meet some new people, I had, and I really enjoyed our lunch, uh, our, our conversation, Lauren, so that was, that was nice. Um, and then, uh, all of us went to the ACA installation, that was new to me too, all these things are new to me, so, interesting. Uh, let's see, uh, went to the AHS opening day with all of you, went to the Highland Oaks Back-to-School Morning, um, was interesting too, because I, I've only been to the schools that I've been a parent at, so that was great. Um, uh, went to the Holly Avenue Back-to-School Event as well, um, went to the Foothills Opening Day and got to meet some parents, I mean, see parents that, they had a, they had a coffee there, and that was great, I got to see Dr. Acker welcoming people, and then they had a parent coffee, and I got to talk to some parents I already knew, and then parents that I actually knew their names, but did not, um, didn't know what they looked like. And then also parents that I'd never met before and didn't know their names, and we had great conversations. Um, and then lastly, was the Council PTA Luncheon, uh, not Luncheon, Executive Board Meeting, and I really appreciated you having the Presidents and Principals Workshop early this year, actually, I think that was great, a great decision. Um, and the Council PTA's theme this year is building community, um, which I think dovetails really well with, with ours, celebrating healthy partnerships, so, that's my report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fargo, and we'll go to Mr. Eng.
Oh. Thank you, Ms. Eng. Um, first, thank you to, uh, Facilities folks for what they did during summer, I saw that collection of photos, what they accomplished, it was a lot of work, and it looks great, it's great. Um, I too went to a lot of events, um, New Educators Academy was, was great, four days of sharing our culture. Um, Welcome Back Luncheon was fantastic also, a lot of clapping, high fives. Uh, went to the first day at Arcadia High School, that's always amazing to see about four thousand people gather in one place and, and one time, and by the time the bell rings, the hallways are empty, it's incredible to see. Went to the first day at Camino Grove, great, great to see the little ones. Um, and also thank you for the school plan for student achievement, that's a lot of work, it's a lot of reading for us too. No, but it's great, like, like you said, it's a lot of great data that we, we can probably spend days just going through that and analyzing, but, uh, a lot of good work, a lot of good information too. And my final pitch, not my final pitch, one of my pitches is, uh, once again, the September twenty-first Gala, being hosted by the Arcadia Performing Arts Foundation, featuring Taylor Dane. So, buy your tickets now before it's sold out.
Thank you, Ms. Gray, Ms. Chavez.
Uh, well, welcome back to school, uh, it was fun to be back at the Arcadia campus for the day before with all educators, and then the first day of school. Um, I focused a lot of my time at elementary this year, I was at Baldwin Stalker, Hugo Reed Primary, and Longley Way, and then circled back to Baldwin Stalker, because they did a really neat coffee and tour for new parents a couple of days after school started. So, I would think, it, I think everyone had a chance to kind of, ah, okay, my kid is here, and now I'm gonna meet more parents, and it was, they had a circle that covered the entire, uh, NPR, which was great, and we did circle time, and I loved to see, uh, circles being utilized, and I think it's so healthy when parents see circles utilized. The New Educator Academy is such a special, uh, way that we onboard our folks here, and, um, shout out, Ryan, to, uh, the DCI video, because, um, I love that event, I love to attend pieces of that event, and I had COVID for the first time this year and couldn't go to any of it, so, I got to live through the video, it was wonderful. Um, I did, uh, want to say congratulations to Greg and to, uh, uh, Mr. Gazanian and Ms. Fargo, because, uh, Masters in Governance, most boards in the state of California have one or two members, maybe, that complete those classes. And the commitment of, uh, you to complete that, um, just says so much about how we feel about Arcadia and our role in being prepared to govern, uh, as best we can, so thank you for giving it that time, it's really important. Um, looking forward to being at the high school, uh, Thursday, this week, to celebrate back to school there, and it was fun to be at Foothills, uh, Middle School as well, so. The, uh, first Athletic Booster Meeting is gonna be in September, and, uh, luckily, they're doing it virtually, so I'll be able to join, um, and I'll report on that as I learn more, but, uh, very excited to be back for the school year. And, uh, lastly, I will just say, yes, those reports with the data and the dashboards, but more importantly, the comments and observations from staff at the sites about how these things fit into their plan, how budgets are used, where areas of growth are identified. The work is incredible, uh, and so thank you to everyone who puts their time and energy into that, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chavez. Yeah, ditto to everything, thank you for all the reports, thank you for all the comments from the board, um, and also thank you for, um, all of your work, uh, attending to all of these events, there's so many over the last month, um, especially the first day, appreciate all of you, um, going out there and making our presence known and supporting our schools. New Educator Academy, I'm sorry I missed it, but yeah, that video looks terrific, um, and really captured, I think, the, the essence, the spirit of that week and that day. And although, uh, Mr. Bramley, you're, maybe you're last year, but, I mean, you can always come back and lead those bus tours. So, I, I, I think your, those shoes would be hard to fill. I, I got the chance to, I, I didn't get to go to, uh, first day at, um, the high school, but I got to help out at the Registration Day, which was just fun to, you know, see the, just some of the students come back and see parents volunteering, and just appreciate, uh, all those parent volunteers to make that day happen. Every, every year seems to go a little smoother, so, uh, didn't seem like there, there were any issues on the day I, I went, so, great job to everybody working that day. Dr. Vernostal and I got to attend the Health Fair that Arcadia, uh, City of Arcadia put on, and, uh, Rachel came as well, and Lauren, uh, thank you for staffing the booth there, it was, it was a great kind of morning, uh, the, there's a, the Army, the United States Army Lieutenant General, who's a Surgeon General of the Army, was there, which gave a, gave a great talk about service, so, um, good morning to have, and I, I think Rachel appreciated it too, maybe. Also got to go to Foothills at First App where they're back-to-school nights, and just like everyone's already mentioned, it was, um, just good to be, good to see all the kids on campus and happy faces and, um, all that good stuff. Um, I think that's, oh, I'm sorry, one last thing, the, the Chamber, so my report from the Arcadia Chamber of Commerce, I got to attend that, uh, a couple of weeks ago. My first, actually probably last meeting, because they're going to, uh, we're virtual, now they're going in-person, and I can't make it in-person, so if anyone would like to attend the in-person Chamber of Commerce meetings, um, let me know. Uh, but, a lot of in, good information shared, uh, Council Elections are, uh, City Council Elections will be happening, uh, this November, a November election, uh, both District One and District Four, um, have two, um, two, two people, uh, running for those seats. The Moon Festival, the city's having a Moon Festival, their second, uh, second one, their second annual Moon Festival on September fourteenth, uh, should be a great event. The racetrack is having their opening day on September twenty-eighth, and they're actually ce- celebrating their ninety-year anniversary this year around Christmas, so it should be a lot of, um, a lot of festivities surrounding that anniversary. And lastly, Taste of Arcadia is September twenty-first, I think it falls on the same day as Taylor Dane, but I think the time is off, it's offset, so, people could make vote, make a whole day, a whole day, uh, event. And, yeah, I think that's it for me, um, I hope everyone has a great, uh, great year, and then I'm gonna have Dr. Vernostal bring us home.
Yeah, thank you. As we were getting up to, from behind the diocese to take pictures, I was reminded to say thank you, Scott, for the updates to our, uh, boardroom, uh, over the summer, the screens and getting this screen up a little bit, and I think we moved it back a little, so it just makes it easier for us to get, uh, back and forth, so appreciate that effort. I was at First Avenue, I, now I traditionally go to one of our elementaries for the first day, uh, this year with our new principal, Principal Islamy, I wanted to support him at First Avenue, but I'll admit, it, it, it's not quite like the, the little ones, like the TK and K, uh, students that, you know, in their little outfits and, uh, just so cute, so. But, uh, smooth, uh, day, exciting to see how excited those middle schoolers were to, uh, start school, and again, like it was mentioned, all of the staff just being out and so helpful and warm and inviting on that first day, just an incredible first day experience, I think, for our students, and everything else was already mentioned, so I won't repeat, so just, uh, welcome back, everyone, I'm looking forward, uh, to another incredible year, and can't wait to see what we accomplish together for our students here in Arcadia.
All right, thank you, Dr. Vernostal, and with that, we will turn at eight fifty-one, have a great year, everyone.